Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. Joy, would you please call the roll?
Hallie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any additions to this evening's agenda? If not, we'll move to our consent agenda. We have several items in there. First, approval of minutes from the May 22 council meeting. We have approval of the June 2 payroll of $115,686.84. We have a resolution of a public purpose policy of expenditures. I'll go through the list here and then have Joy just pull that out separately. We have a resolution of employment for Park and Rec Department, part-time employment. Approval of wastewater debt in the amount of $254,415. Approval of water debt in the amount of $391,308.75. Approval of general obligation debt in the amount of $1,710,820. We have approval of liquor licenses for everybody's Whole Foods, localized store, Cafe Paradiso, Walton Club, Come and Go Number 134, and Shokai Sushi. And claims in the amount of $270,296.47. I'll call your attention, counsel, to the year-to-date for general fund. Mike brought this to my attention this afternoon, that you'll see we received all of our revenue from tax collection for the year. Expenditures are at 83.25 percent, so we are behind on the expenditure -- or not behind, but we are lower as expenditures, meaning we should be carrying some cash over in our general fund. So, good work with the department heads on that, Mike. So, Joy, would you comment just quickly on the public purpose policy?
Sure. That was created to satisfy our auditors. They make a comment every year, and it really basically is right out of our policy manual, but we wanted to put it in a resolution form to break it down. It's to -- I think you all have a copy, but it's, you know, that you can send flowers for a death or an illness. If somebody retires or leaves, we can provide them with a plaque or chamber bucks. And then the same thing with a council member or a mayor. We've always done that in the past, but we've never put it in writing. So, we're just basically just making it more obvious, I guess.
More transparent.
Transparent.
Yeah, I think that the audit basically reminds us that all of our dollars are supposed to be for a public purpose, so this essentially defines those small things that we do do occasionally during the year, including our Christmas party.
Right.
As something that is a public purpose. Any questions, counsel?
Not on that item, but the approval of the three debt amounts, is that a new line item?
No, we've done that. The debt comes due twice a year, and I think we did it -- it's always December and June. I think we did it in December. That was another reason to satisfy the auditors. We've always done it. It comes right out of our checking account, and it goes through our books, but they wanted it on the agenda to have, you know, the council members aware of it. It's the same debt.
And these are funds held in reserve or that are coming in through new debt that's being borrowed?
Thank you.
Any other questions regarding the consent agenda? Okay. If not, entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Thompson. Please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes, but I need to abstain for the minutes of May 22.
Okay. Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, we'll move on to our resolutions, action items, and ordinances. The first is consideration of the acceptance of a settlement of $28,000. This was an insurance issue that's been going on for a couple of years, and there's a settlement involved. And I'll ask Joy again to give you a little background on this.
It was a -- I don't even know what it was called. There was just a discrepancy. Two Rivers, which -- who is our health insurance carrier, was not revealing their commission on the statements each month to -- there's about 31 groups in IG HCP, and Two Rivers is our agent. So, they were accused of not -- the insurance commissioner came down and said, "No, you're not breaking it down on the statement." We all knew that we were paying commission. They didn't do this for free, but, boy, this has gone on for three years. They did not want to admit that there was any wrongdoing, but it just keeps going on and on and on, and three years is a long time to live with this over your head. So, they just -- Two Rivers finally just decided to settle, to just get it over and done with. And we -- the city of Fairfield is to receive
Twenty-eight thousand.
Twenty-eight thousand. I forget what it is. Twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty cents. And if we do not accept it, it goes back and is divided to the rest of the entities that are in this pool with us. So, the money, it's $1.3 million between -- that's split between all these entities. That money has been sent to the Insurance Commissioner of Iowa, so it's just sitting there, ready to go out.
So, we don't have any -- we don't have any argument with the settlement amount?
We don't have -- no, we don't want to.
This is a restitution that has been negotiated by the state with the insurance carrier, and we've just been waiting for whatever
Right.
Whatever settlement amount that they are going to recommend.
Yeah, the money's there. I just need approval to sign Exhibit B, that's the election to participate and release these funds. I just need the -- yeah, I just need approval of that, so we can get that 20. And what we plan to do is put that 28,000 in our insurance fund, and so we can levy less next year.
Right. So, those dollars would have come out of the insurance fund, then we're going back into the insurance fund. And again, it's -- this isn't anything that we discovered. It was brought to our attention by the state, and they were the ones that had the problem with Two Rivers and how they did their accounting. So, this is the result of that. So, entertain a motion then to accept the settlement from Two Rivers.
Second.
Moved by Katie, second by Thompson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Thank you. Ms. Counsel, we have a resolution to accept Fillmore and Liberty Drive Water Main project as final. And Mel, if you would just give a quick comment. I know there's a letter explaining it, but that's
Yeah, and I apologize, I'm not prepared to talk specifically on this, but what we're looking for tonight is a motion to accept the project as final. This was Water Main construction along Fillmore from 6 to
Little Fawn.
Little Fawn, thank you.
Oh, that's somebody lives near there.
Yeah. And it was awarded to G.R. Miller of Washington. Mike and myself and the Water Department have looked at it, and everything is functioning well now. We've tested the tracer wire to make sure all of that works. There is a little bit of seeding to touch up that the city crews -- it was related to brush pickup, and so the city crews is going to be doing a little bit of touch-up work, but we -- all of the rest of the work that was under contract is complete. And I believe that this then would start the two-year warranty period from the date of your acceptance.
Thank you. Thank you, Mel. Counsel, you have a letter from Steve Hausner of French Renniker, also talking about the final project and the amounts that will be released in retainage. So, entertain a motion to accept the project as final.
Move to accept.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Anderson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Thank you. Okay. Mel, we're gonna need you again.
What?
I think -- are you -- I'm sorry, Mike is gonna take this.
No, Mike better take it out.
All right. So, we have a resolution approving construction contract and bond for the wastewater treatment improvements bid package number two, Equalization Basin, with Carly Nelson. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, as you're aware, we awarded the contract to construct our 20-million-gallon equalization or flow equalization basin to Carly Nelson for $1,252,000. They have put together all of their necessary contract documents. We've sent them to Allers and Cooney in Des Moines. Our bond counsel has reviewed those contract documents. All of the documents, including their compliance statements to USDA, their performance bond, and their insurances, are in place and as bid. So, we would recommend awarding the -- or approving the contract documents as found in your packet.
Okay. Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
Any questions, counsel, regarding the documents? Okay. Entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, we move to our ordinance to repeal and place our fireworks and explosive ordinance, and that means that it's the -- regarding the new law governing the use -- the legal use of fireworks in the state of Iowa. At our last meeting, we had a brief discussion, and we looked at what the legislature had passed and felt that we would just take the next couple of weeks to gather feedback from the community, anticipating that there would be recommendations for a shorter period of time than was recommended by the legislature or passed by the legislature. So, public safety, if you would give us a report, and then we'll open up a public hearing for comment as well.
Yeah, public safety, Doug and I have been in contact. We've -- we're trying to give John the space he needs following his family emergency. So, Doug and I have both been contacted via phone, email, and pretty much every means under the sun, and we're both on the same page that we agree we could shorten the time with little to no -- we have no qualms with shortening the time. So, we would like to propose changing the wording in the ordinance to the Friday of the weekend preceding July 4th to the Sunday of the weekend following July 4th, leaving the hours as they were. So, 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. on the 4th to 11:00 p.m. So, the hours want to change. What that does is allow families that gather the weekend before or the weekend after the holiday to have the opportunity to celebrate with fireworks. And then with regards to the New Year's, due to the fact that most people do actually have to go back to work, we had recommend -- we're going to recommend that we change those dates to December 30th, 31st, January 1st and 2nd. Again, same times as listed in the ordinance, 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And then I believe it was until 12:00 or 12:30 on the actual
12:30.
12:30, yeah.
12:30 on
On New Year's Eve. So, shortening the New Year's down to four days and shortening the July 4 span to the weekends preceding and following the actual holiday.
Okay. All right, thank you. At this time, I'll ask if counsel has received feedback that they would like to pass on that the committee may not have.
The only feedback I got was I received an email about pet owners being concerned about noise of fireworks and dogs and different pets, but that's the only comment that I had, and they were looking to decrease the amount of time during the day versus shortening the entire time period. But shortening the time period but leaving the time as it is, I think, is a good viable solution.
Okay. Thank you. And Mike, if you would comment about -- because I know I've been reading some of the reports in the Register about what some of the other cities are doing, but you were on a listserv with some other city managers. What have you heard out there?
Boy, it's everywhere from soup to nuts. Literally, the city of Waverly's doing nothing. They're not going to allow fireworks. The city of Des Moines is doing one day with some very restricted hours. Other communities are matching state law verbatim. Some communities are going seven days prior to the 4th and after the 4th. It, by and large, as most cities, were allowing fireworks use in their municipality. Very few were saying no fireworks at all in our community, but it's literally all over the board out there in terms of what communities are allowing, both in size and the dates.
Right. Good. So, at this time, we'll open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone who would like to speak to the issue this evening? Okay. Seeing no one -- Chief? Do you have anything? Maybe our fire chief might have something to say.
Chief of Police have anything?
Chief of Police?
We've discussed with -- we'll -- I've discussed with a couple council people in the administration. We will definitely go with the decision. It's very difficult. It's a busy time of the year, and the more restrictive it is, the more calls we'll have. But we'll enforce it with whatever you folks decide.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. So, all right, so we'll close the public hearing at this time. Katie, so this year, if we went with what you'd proposed, would we be legal from the Saturday, the June 24th through July 4th? Or would it be?
What do you mean, would you be legal? You're looking at the Friday prior?
I'm looking at June -- I'm looking at June 2017.
Right.
So, Saturday is the 24th, and then the 4th would be Tuesday, correct? Yeah.
We're looking at, based on what I just proposed.
Right.
It would be the 30th, so the Friday of the weekend preceding to Sunday, the 9th, the Sunday of the weekend following.
Okay.
So, it'd be more or less June 30th to July 9th.
Okay.
You wouldn't state it with those exact dates?
Although that
I would not state it with dates for ordinance purposes.
Right.
We specifically came up with Friday of the weekend preceding to Sunday of the weekend following.
Yeah.
Does that go -- does that go beyond state law, though? What did the state -- did the state law define days in July? Wasn't there a final date?
July 8th.
Yes, we've reduced it greatly.
To 8. So, you would -- so, but so, in other words, yours would, for this year, would go through the 8th?
July 8th or June 8th?
July.
Oh, then, yeah, we could put it through the 8th for this year. I don't know how John would -- Mr. Morsy would have to help me with wording on that.
Just add a line that says, "No later than July."
As allowed by law or whatever.
Okay. So, I just want to explore this a little bit. It seems to me that I think a lot of the places that I think a lot of the other cities were basically cutting it off day after, regardless. I know, you know, whatever they did beforehand, they were cutting it off day after because that's essentially the day after the celebration. Does it -- I mean, including the weekend prior, in years where it would line up and make sense, but anyone have any feelings about that?
We just discussed trying to catch celebrations where if you don't get this weekend off, but you would celebrate after. I mean, unlike New Year's Eve, it kind of floats.
It does, yeah.
It floats throughout the week. I know it's always the 4th, but
Right. And it's always celebrated on the 4th, too. I mean, there is a -- it is a federal holiday, so it's not like some holidays where
Like, will the city of Fairfield shoot off fireworks on the 4th, or will they do it the weekend prior?
It depends.
Yeah.
I mean, actually, no. Actually, it is -- it's always on the 4th because it is a -- because it is a federal holiday.
Okay.
As opposed to Halloween and some of the other holidays where you're going to line it up where it was
Fourth, yeah.
I, myself personally, I like the idea of being able to do it the weekend before and the weekend after, particularly if the 4th falls on a Wednesday. A lot of times, people won't take the whole week or something like that off, and curtailing it the day after. On July 2nd, that would be like Thursday, and you're still going to have people wanting to do this on the weekend following, you know? It works with people's schedules, I think.
I didn't feel like that was necessarily the same with New Year's, though. It seems like New Year's is celebrated, and then we all go back to work grudgingly.
Yeah, and not a lot of people are wanting to stand around at 6:30 shooting off fireworks when it's below zero.
Exactly.
Or does anybody even want to do it outside of the New Year's Eve?
Oh, there's going to be a lot of that. I do believe that there will be a lot of people using fireworks at New Year's Eve. Yeah.
Yes, but I'm just saying on December 30 or 31st. Well, that is New Year's Eve, 31st.
Yeah.
I mean, okay. All right, so the proposal then, and well, all right, the other thing, too, counsel, is with this proposal
Will this get enacted in time to be effective this year?
The third -- this would be second reading. A third reading would be on the 26th, and that would leave you time because it is prior to the first weekend as you've set it up for this year. I would recommend that you do get public reaction to this proposal, so.
It will be in the paper, right? And on the radio?
Mayor, why me?
Yes, go ahead, Mike.
We have reached out to the ledger and sort of given them the outline of the space that the ordinance would take so they can pre-plan, because technically our ordinances aren't legal until they're published. So, we're trying to coordinate with the ledger to publish on Tuesday, July 27th, so then the ordinance would then be legal
As soon as it's published.
June 27th.
Okay.
Yeah, June.
Okay. Very good.
That's no on record.
I would make a motion to move this from the second to the third reading.
Moved by Hamilton?
As amended.
As amended?
As amended, yes.
Second.
Second by Anderson. Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, counsel, we have a resolution which is a revision to the Transportation Improvement Program tip for the Highway 1 improvements. Melanie, if you'd lead us through this again. This is a reviving something that we'd approved several years ago and kind of bringing that back to the council's attention
Yep.
In light of what the DOT is telling us to partner with.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And so, the discussion here really covers the next two resolutions, but tomorrow, the Iowa DOT will vote on their five-year plan, which includes funding $3.5 million to highway -- to improvements on Highway 1 from Fillmore to just south of Libertyville Road. And what's attached to the agenda and up on the screen is the conceptual layout that was used to put together the total cost estimate for the improvements. The total cost estimate is 4.2 million, and that would fund either a roundabout or an improved intersection at Libertyville Road. And I want to emphasize that what you're approving tonight is not the concept of a roundabout or a standard intersection. We really are not sure at this point how that decision is going to be made and who makes that decision. What is being proposed tonight is approval for the remaining -- remaining $700,000, the difference between 4.2 and 3.5. So, the first resolution, in 2013, the city as the applicant, but Jefferson County Trails Council really spearheaded the application, was to get a competitive grant through the Transportation Improvements Program to pave the shoulders of Highway 1. At the time, that's what could be afforded with the money that was available through the region. But this resolution is to revise that application to, first of all, move the project from 2018 to 2021, and then also use that money that was granted back in 2013 for the sidewalks and the trail on this proposed project. So, the first resolution makes up 400,000 of the 700,000 that is needed. Of that 400,000, the resolution, 80,000 of it is city funds, 320,000 is the grant that has already been proposed. Then the remaining 300,000 of that $4.2 million budget is your second resolution item, and that is an application for STP funds. These are the funds that are used for roads like Kirkwood. The city has approximately 600,000 in their reserve or in that fund, and so you would be approving an application to use 240,000 of STP funds towards this project and 60,000 of local match. So, it's an 80/20 match on both of those applications, but these two resolutions would be putting all of that money towards this project, of course contingent upon DOT approving the five-year plan tomorrow.
That's right, it's tomorrow, right.
I thought it was today, but it's tomorrow shortly after 8, so.
Right. Good. And then also, those STP funds, they're continuously allocated as well. So, we do have a reserve right now, 600,000. That will also build, but the region does do that. They do ask all of the different entities, the cities and counties that make up that, to designate what years they're going to utilize those funds. So, this is essentially holding a place for those dollars to be utilized in 2022.
2021.
21. It can always be modified and amended along the way, but at this point in time, I think it would be best for the city to designate those, to have those funds in place. And this was also part of our application. It's what we said in our application to the DOT to -- for the 4.2 million. So, it's essentially reinforcing what it is that we proposed for funding from our side.
Yeah, and the STP, like I said, you have a current balance of around 600,000. Under the current federal funding, the city's receiving 200,000, about 200,000 a year into that fund. So, as the mayor mentioned, that it continues to build until a project is designated.
Right, very good. So, then the first resolution would be to approve the revision of the Transportation Improvement Program. And again, that was the grant program that Melanie specified with a city contribution of $80,000. So, entertain a motion to approve that resolution.
Someone?
Moved by Thompson.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign?
I will abstain
Okay.
My employment with the Department of Transportation.
Yes, thank you. Motion does pass with four votes, one abstention. Second would be resolution considering the placement of the STP funds for highway improvements. And the amount there, Melanie, again, was?
240,000 with 60,000 of -- let me double check. 240,000 STP with 60,000 of local match.
Okay. So, entertain a motion to approve.
Someone?
Moved by Thompson.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And one abstention.
And one abstention.
Yes, thank you, Darren.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mel. Counsel, in my report, I just wanted to give you a little bit of a download, a report on our meetings last Thursday through Saturday morning with the Iowa Architects Foundation, who is here to do the wayfinding strategy session and design session. It was really quite energetic and quite good, quite comprehensive. We had eight members of the Iowa Architects Foundation here, five architects. We had landscape designer and urban planner and really wonderful people who really appreciated what we have here in the community. And, you know, their approach towards looking at the challenges of maximizing the orientation value of signage and other things within the community was a project that they felt went even beyond signage itself. I mean, we did get recommendations that included signs, but they also sort of prioritized what it was someone was coming to Fairfield for and what visitors enjoyed about the experience of being in Fairfield and how that can be enhanced. I'll mention that there was a great emphasis on the downtown, and there were recommendations that came about our downtown and things that we can do from a policy standpoint, but there were a number of recommendations that were very specific about signage and about entryways and how to make that very inviting and enticing feeling about where you've arrived and what you should expect to find here. So, again, we were very pleased with the process. They really liked working in our community. We got great response from a lot of the community organizations. We partnered with this, with the Convention and Visitors Bureau. And so, what we've done is we got a full report from them, and what we'd like to do is to share that broadly within the community. So, we're going to -- we're looking for a date where a couple of the other members will come back down to Fairfield and do a presentation for the council, for our Chamber of Commerce, CVB. CBB, beautification, all of the different organizations that will in some way be a part of this, and of course, for the public as well. So there are specific prescriptive elements to it, but we felt it would be good if the, you know, if the whole group got a look at that first. So we're hoping that that date is going to come soon and we'll probably do a special, special meeting to, to view that. But I think everybody will be pleased. So we, we're very excited about it. And again, not to basically divulge any, any of the specifics in it at this point because I think when you take them all in total, you get a big, you know, a better appreciation for what it is that they found and what it is that they presented. But we were all very happy. So we will let you know on that. Okay, I did miss a resolution and that is, we'll move to that now. And that is consideration of charitable public purpose memorial fund agreement. And Darren, if you're gonna give us background on that?
Yeah, we spoke about this at the property committee that was held at 5:30 this afternoon prior to the meeting. I did not ask whether the person that's wanting to make this donation wants their name out there yet or not, so I'm not going to mention that. But this particular individual would like to make a charitable gift of the old Tribune property on the corner of Main and Briggs with some improvements that will be done through this gift. It was discussed by the committee. We felt that it would be very good to pursue this. This would be a great improvement for that area. It would be dedicated as a park, not a parking lot. It will be designed in a fashion that will clean up all the edges that are broken away with the terrazzo right now and cover the granular surface that's there on the one end of the property. It would be defined well enough with movable plantings in pots and, and that type of thing so it can be configured in many different ways for different uses at different times. The donor feels that maybe it would be a good use for a stage or outdoor dining or just a meet and greet location there on the corner. And the committee all felt that it would be a very good donation to the city. And we liked what we heard. The donation would actually take place from the individual to the Jefferson County Foundation. Then the foundation would in turn gift it to the city. That's to require some 503, 503 C...
501(c)(3).
501(c)(3) agreements that have to be made for this type of money to be used in this manner for this individual. So the committee recommends that we go ahead and move forward with the paperwork in that we have to go through. Our attorney and another attorney for this individual have to work out some agreements yet before this can transpire. But I would think that we could maybe look at some improvements being done on that property by the fall yet. So it, it would be a really good donation to the city.
Thank you, Darren. Yes, this individual is donating this as a memorial to a family member of the past. And, and I, I think the sale is contingent, John, on, on the city accepting this, I believe. Because if not, he's, he's really not interested in that, but his only interest is to make this available as a park for the downtown. So I think it's, it is, you know, a very, very nice gift, obviously, considering...
It is. Extremely generous.
Yeah.
Right.
And, yeah, and I, and I think everybody would love to see some improvements on that property, too. It's not the safest place right now.
Right.
So...
Right.
So entertain a motion then to accept the charitable gift for the public purpose memorial.
I would make that a motion.
Moved by Hamilton?
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Okay, thank you. Now move to our committee reports, Ways and Means. Tom?
Actually, Melanie covered everything that we had with the revision.
Okay, all those revisions, great.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Is there a property committee report?
Yes, there was one other item that we had at the meeting prior to the council meeting this evening concerning the property that Fairfield Castings was wanting to give to the city of Fairfield. It's the recommendation of the committee that we step aside and not be interested in taking that property at this time to allow other nonprofit groups here in the community to look at the possibility of them taking the property. We feel, the committee feels that we don't want to stand in the way of somebody doing that. We've had some questions from the beginning when it comes to this property, but we have been told through Calvin Todd, our Park and Rec Director, that discussions with the DNR says, say that that property can be gifted to pretty much any nonprofit group or municipality, depending on who would want to take it. So the committee recommends that we just step aside from this right now to allow some other group to step up and see if they have a desire to take the donation.
Okay.
And that was all we had.
Great. Alright, then we'll move on to our department reports. Joy, you have a report for us regarding our local ops and sales tax. And these are gifts that we are giving to organizations throughout the community and this is an accounting of how they have used their dollars.
Thank you. Mike had asked me to possibly visit each one of the recipients of the local ops and sales tax money. I actually kind of enjoyed it. We've got a list of it, of all the recipients. There was, I think approximately, it was somewhere between 187,200 right in there that could be allotted. And we went right down to the, yeah, the 186, 598. I don't know if, the ones that was kind of interesting to me was like the Lord's Cupboard. I had never been there. And they had renovated the Sunshine Laundry.
That's great.
So it, it was quite an eye-opener. It's, it's beautiful. I just, I was really shocked. And the other one was Noah's Ark. I had never been there either and wow. They use the money for their spay and neutering programs. But man, is that impressive. That's a, that's a clean, clean facility and they really do appreciate, I mean, they all appreciated their money. But it was really kind of an eye-opener for me to see how they use it. The Little League used it to, what'd they do? They resurfaced their field. And I do remember driving by and seeing that, so that was, it is good. They're, they're using the money just, in my opinion, for what it's supposed to be used for.
Great, thank you, Joy.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions, counsel, about the report? Entertain a motion to accept the report?
So moved.
Moved by Anderson?
Second.
Second by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Thank you. Counsel, at this time, we do have some business to discuss in closed session according to Iowa Code 21.5J, which is discussing a real estate purchase. So I would entertain a motion to go into closed session and thank everyone for participating this evening and then clear the chambers.
So moved.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Thompson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Thank you.